All right, it is six o'clock and it's time for our December School Board meeting. Appreciate all of you that are here tonight and appreciate your presence. And at this time, I'll call the meeting to order. And please note that four board members here, Dr. Lamb couldn't be here tonight, and the superintendent. So the meeting is called to order. If you would, join me for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Gray will stand and join me in the presentation of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may proceed. Item C is to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion?
She'll move.
Mr. Hurd made him also have a second.
I'll second it.
Ms. Davis seconded. All in favor, let it be known by a lifted hand. All four board members present adopted the agenda. Item two is communications. And as I told some of these parents, this is one of our favorite parts of the school board meeting. And so we've got, first of all, these recognitions. Dr. Stock.
So our first recognition tonight is Garrett County Schools' Campbell Office Equipment Support Staff of the Month. And this month, we are recognizing Ms. Ruby Lear. Ms. Lear is the cafeteria manager at Lancaster Elementary, and she's worked for the district for 16 years. She plays a vital role in creating a warm and welcoming environment for our students each and every day. This happens through her supervision of the food service operations and the entire kitchen staff. And she runs the entire process like a well-oiled machine. On top of making nutritious food, Mrs. Lear and her staff are always participating in dress-up dates, helping with rewards, and doing anything else that the students may need. She's simply a joy to work with, and her dedication to the students at Lancaster Elementary is never lacking. We're blessed to have her as part of our team. Congratulations, Ms. Lear. Ms. Middleton told me you had a speech. No? All right. Our second recognition tonight is the Garrett County Schools' and Whittaker Bank Teacher of the Month, Ms. Alyssa Oaks. Ms. Oaks is a first-year teacher who completed her student teaching at Lancaster Elementary, and it was a no-brainer to make sure she had a permanent place at LES after seeing her talents in the classroom. She's now teaching second-grade math and continues to showcase those talents every day. A particular strength is her engagement strategies used to bring concepts to life for her students. She's been a great addition to LES, and we know her students will benefit from her creative and innovative teaching strategies. Congratulations, Ms. Middleton. Now the Garrett County Schools' and Farmers National Bank Students of the Month. Our first student is from Camp Dick Robinson, and it's William Jojo Lewis. He's not with us tonight. We'll make sure we get his recognitions to him. Next, from Lancaster Elementary, is Dani Lynn Kane. Dani Lynn is a third-grade student at LES and is a bright and caring student who's always willing to help her fellow students. She puts forth her best effort into every assignment and creates a positive and uplifting environment in the classroom. Dani Lynn is a model student and embodies all our leopard expectations, and we're proud to have her at Lancaster Elementary. Congratulations, Dani Lynn. Next, from Paint Lake Elementary, is Savannah Causey. Savannah's a second grader, and she always tries her best, no matter the time or the place. She puts just as much effort into little assignments as she does a finals test. Even her handwriting is neat and orderly. She's a great friend to her classmates and is always helping someone out. We love having her in class, and she brightens up everyone's day. She's sweet and kind. We're proud to have her at Paint Lake, and congratulations, Savannah. Next, from Garrett Mills School, is Savannah Broughton. Savannah's an eighth-grade student at GMS, and she's an enthusiastic learner who seems to love school. She's kind and helpful to everyone in class and is considerate when interacting with her teachers. She takes an active role in class discussion, and she's a wonderful writer. She's a great addition to the GMS student body. Congratulations, Savannah. And from Garrett County High School, Marissa Buckey. Marissa is a senior at GCHS, and she's a hard-working, motivated, dedicated student-athlete. She's worked hard to become a dual-transition-ready student in college and career status. She obtained career status by passing her business end-of-course assessment. She's also a shining star in AP and dual-credit classes and could earn up to 33 dual-credit hours by graduation. GCHS is so proud of the hard work she's done in the classroom and is a cheerleader. GCHS is very appreciative to have such an outstanding young lady. Thank you, Marissa, for representing GCHS in excellence and for modeling the expectations of a golden life.
All right, item B is our principals' report.
Did you give a conflict or a bell? We can do that.
I hope everybody takes some food as you go. Will we go ahead? Or should we wait? Are we good to go? Okay. Hi, Dani Lynn. Congratulations, honey. Good job. Well, thank you all for giving the opportunity to kind of showcase Lancaster Elementary and some of the great things we're doing. Our unofficial motto this year is "It's a Great Time to Be a Leopard." And we just keep saying that. You know, we've got some good changes going on, and we're just really excited. So looking at our test scores from the 2022-23 school year, we were able to make some changes from 2021 to 22. Our classification went from orange to yellow, so one step up, so that was great news. And something we're really excited about is the next slide, which is our reading and math indicator, which was from yellow to green. So, and our change was increased significantly, so that was really, really good to see. And that includes, oh, I'm sorry, that was in our gap groups as well, so we increased significantly across the board. Science, social studies, and writing, we were a level orange, but we were able to maintain. And then our school climate and safety was also yellow, and we increased in that as well. So even though we were able to see some growth, there are a lot of things we want to put in place to continue to see growth. So just listed on the screen is a few of the things we're focusing on this year. And one of the most important things we're putting in place is consistent PLCs, which are professional learning communities, and that's just one of our agendas. And as you can see, we are really focusing on a study as a staff called Opportunity Myth, and that was a study of 4,000 students in five diverse school systems, and they followed these students to see what made them successful in class. So we've been studying that as a staff, and we want to make sure we implement those four things, which are great appropriate assignments, strong instruction, deep engagement, and teachers with high expectations. We're also studying Hattie as a group, if you've been in education like Ms. Arnold. John Hattie is sort of the guru of telling us what works in classrooms, so we want to make sure we're bringing that to our classes every day. Not only are we studying what works, we're also following our students daily. So our teachers have been creating assessments, daily formative assessments, and we're also tracking each student. So we're tracking their I-ready scores from fall to winter. We're also tracking their reading levels, and we're able to intervene when they need help. We're also tracking our daily formative assessments, and that's just a snapshot of the program we use called Edelastic. And the next slide is our I-ready scores from fall to winter. So all the things that we've put in place, we are able to see lots of growth from that. So the most recent one is on the left, and the first window is on the right. So we were really, really pleased with our I-ready growth this time. And we work really hard, but we also play really hard. And one of the things that's unique about Lancaster Elementary is our House and Club Day. So our entire school is divided into houses, and during house time, we have kindergarten students all the way up to fifth grade who will go to a teacher for the morning, and they will do social-emotional activities and fun things. And then in the afternoon, each student goes to their club for the afternoon. So that's just some of the fun things we have. We have a fossil club there on the left, a coding club on the bottom, cooking club, and students get to change their club every nine weeks. It's one of the really fun things our students look forward to. And our staff has a great time, too. We believe in a healthy school culture. Our kindergarten teachers are having a good time there with a funny selfie that they have to stand in for a prize. And last but not least, Ms. Eisen made a video for you all. She interviewed some of our students to see what they loved about LES. What's your name?
Ally.
Ally, what grade are you in?
Third.
Okay, what's your favorite thing about Lancaster Elementary?
Every year, we have a theme, and you walk through the hallway, and it's just decorated, and it's so good.
Hi, Jace. What grade are you in?
My name is, oh.
What grade are you in?
I'm in grade four.
Okay. What's your favorite subject?
I like all of those. I like all of those subjects.
That's all of them? Okay, what's something that you've learned this year that's really cool?
I-ready.
I-ready. Did you do good on I-ready?
Yes.
How about? Thank you. It'd have to be reading. Why do you love reading?
Because when I was in first grade, I could not read at all, and I did not. In that same year, I got the highest score in the first grade.
Really? That's amazing. Okay, thank you. What's your name?
Adeline.
Hi, Adeline. What grade are you in?
First.
First grade. What is your favorite thing about Lancaster Elementary?
Math.
Math? Why do you love math so much?
Because I get to do a lot of pluses and minuses and equals.
Okay, thank you. What's your name?
Pacey Kramer.
Pacey, what grade are you in?
First grade.
What's your favorite thing about Lancaster Elementary?
All the teachers.
Okay. What's something that you've learned this year?
Taxation without representation.
Okay, good. Thank you. Hey, what's your name?
Dani Lynn.
Dani Lynn, what grade are you in?
Third.
What is your favorite thing about Lancaster Elementary?
Miss Middleton is really nice, and all the teachers are really nice.
What's your favorite subject?
Math.
What's your favorite thing to do with math?
Divide.
Who's your math teacher?
Ms. Warren.
Is she a good math teacher?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Just to be clear, that's not the reason Dani Lynn Kane was Student of the Month tonight. She completely earned that. Thank you all so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Hey, aren't Stan, our Camp Dick Robinson Student of the Month, here? Y'all want to come up?
So the CDR Student of the Month this month is William Jojo Lewis. Jojo is a second grader and is an exceptional student. He always puts forth his best effort at school. Jojo adds insightful comments to class discussions where they're talking about how fog is just a form of water vapor to pointing out authors' errors in their writing. That shows how he applies higher-level thinking skills while learning every day. He works hard in every subject and is a wonderful reader. Jojo will even entertain our class by writing and reading his own stories, changing his voice for the different characters. Jojo exhibits all the qualities of a model bobcat and is a great example and friend to his peers. Congratulations, Jojo, on being Student of the Month.
Thank you all.
Y'all welcome. All right, item C is the site-based decision-making amendments, and I hope fellow board members have had an opportunity to go over those. Item D is all his comments.
We haven't today.
Item E is board members. Any board member?
Just like, I think we should recognize the fact that we're very beginning the first semester, and it's been successful. Our scores have been, are showing encouragement. The reports that we've heard at school have been very encouraging, very intentional. And having been able to witness one of our school performances and the parent participation, I think we're back to pre-COVID levels of people coming into our buildings and enjoying this, our children and seeing them share their talents. So it's been a good first semester.
Thank you.
Appreciate everyone.
All right, we'll move on then. Next item is superintendent's time and the goals update.
So this month, the goals update really revolves around the fact that you'll be approving our district improvement plan. We've shared that with you for you to have an opportunity to see it. I shared some information with you when we met in one-on-one sessions. Mr. Cottle is here, and he's going to give you a quick synopsis. Everybody who knows Larry is thinking quick, and Larry are interesting candidates. I think he's going to knock it out of the park tonight, so.
Well, I also prepared a video, and I went around and interviewed all the principals and took video, prepared that. Chris, you want to bring that up? It is "Why Do You Love the C-Dip?" Okay, so I do like a good plan. So as you probably have reviewed, we have two priorities that we have identified, but it's not just like singular, but these are two major priorities we will data-track throughout the year and will honestly frame some professional learning around to make certain that within each of our schools, we have the opportunity to address this in the classroom or directly with students. So the first one is students with disabilities reading and math. So that will continue to be a focus. It was a prior focus throughout our plan. You'll see an emphasis on professional learning and co-teaching, professional learning in specially-designed instruction, and so that was a big focus for last year's PD, and it'll continue to be a focus for this year. New to the C-Dip this year is EL, so that's English learners. We have what we feel like is a good goal, is to increase that by 10%, those students who are reaching attainment. The TEAM, meaning the district leadership. The team, meaning the district leadership team, has had this as a focus prior to the plan being published all the way back to August. So some things occurred. We've seen an increase in student enrollment requiring EL support. So that's placed EL as another new priority focus for this plan. So those are the two, the two ways or the two key core performance processes that we'll be using this year or focusing on, which is more system-wide, not create a system within the school district. That's design and deliver assessment literacy. Did a good job of getting design and delivering or designing and deploying standards. That was last year's big primary focus. Standards are in a better place, curriculum documents are in place, assessments are in a better place. We're administering the curriculum, we're administering tests. Now it's about assessment literacy. What do you do with that information? How do you interpret that information in order to move into actionable plans? And then finally, review, analyze, and apply results and data. And so that's exactly what you saw Ms. Middleton doing in her presentation. Lots of data tracking, moving into actionable plans for, for students. And so those will be our big focuses within this plan.
So if you have any questions, we're happy to address those. One of the things that I shared with you last week is that we actually removed a few things from the plan because they are now in place. We don't need to implement, we just need to continue those. When they drop out of the plan, it doesn't mean we're not continuing to focus on those. Simply means we don't have to have that as a target that we're working on so we can move to these new targets and make sure that we're being as inclusive of our students as we possibly can.
Exactly. So we wrote this for the date 2026, so that's our big goal. And so over the course of the next couple of years, 2026, that's when we'll go through and do a complete and total revamp of the plan.
The things that drop out of the plan and you say that's something you really don't have to monitor, but in a way you probably are monitoring that, so if it does backslide, it gets reactivated?
Yeah, so if I said we're not monitoring it, that's a mistake on my part. Simply doesn't mean it has to be implemented. We have to continue the process and we do. Our teachers are visited on a frequent basis by their, by their principals, assistant principals, but then also by the, the district level staff as well to make sure that we continue where we are and continue to move forward. I think a good way to characterize that is this plan really focuses on what is the most meaningful and powerful use of the district's time. And so that's what ends up being in this plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the construction update.
Good evening, everyone. Good to be back. I think I was absent at the last board meeting. I was away on vacation with the family, but I hear Brad carried the torch very well on the update. I've got a few photos here. If we can rotate them, there you go. Close it up. Now that we're starting to get some, some construction, it's coming out of the ground. I wanted to start providing you all some photos each month. Previously, it would just be same pictures of dirt being just relocated in a different place. But here's a photo, this is more from the west looking at the new baseball field.
Here are some images of this.
The building to the left is the baseball home dugout. The one you see kind of in the lower right corner of the frame is the new baseball press box. And then the one farther stub from it, that one there is, of course, the visitor dugout. You can see the infield's starting to take shape there. This is, you know, starting to get our preliminary base down. The outfield will come in at a little later date, but later in the spring when the weather starts changing and we can work dirt better.
I got to ask this question. It's from an old baseball coach. How far is home run fence going to be back?
I can't quote that from you tonight. I want you to give me that, give me a little heads up and I'd have had that number, but it is. It'll be per design.
Means we can host district or region.
That, that's where I'm coming from.
It is squared off midway through. It's not perfect large because of the site limitations. But it is well within, if I'm true, the cage, I say, for a pro bowl park.
I'm assuming it's well over 300 feet.
I, off the top of my head, I think it's 320, maybe 330, but I can't. I know it varies in the middle because of that last one.
Good enough.
Isn't it? That's why I brought him along.
That's it. That is it. This photo is more from the, from the northwest and I wanted to get a good shot of this. If you see more on the right-hand side, this photo was taken last week when we were actually pouring, the contractor pouring the slab for what we call Building B. It's your home locker room and restroom building. So concrete trucks there, we utilize, or they utilize a pump truck to be able to get to concrete placement where they needed it. Pour worked very well. Slab looks very good when, when they finished it at the end of the day. If you look to the left of that, you can also start seeing the softball field take shape. The, that's, as Dr. Stoll is circling, that is the area of the infield. Just to the left of that, the more shiny pad there, that's going to be the new storage building. We have all the slabs poured for that. Just up from that, where you can start seeing some of the equipment, that again will be the home baseball dugout. And then as you come around, there'll be a home or a press box and then the visitor dugout on the other side over there. But that's just more of a shot, you know, like I said, from the northwest to give you a better outlook of how the, the site is going to lay out now that we're starting to get some structures coming into place. I kind of put this picture in because I just really liked it. Took this shot early in the morning, see the sun's coming up over in the east and just for observation, there was 22 individuals of that one contractor that are working for that slab pour that day. So we had a good, a good turnout of staff members to make that happen. This shot is more straight north. Again, that's just another shot of your baseball field, but that'll give you a better idea of where the dugouts and the, the press box is going to lay. And then of course, in the background, you can see the base to the football field and then those two retaining walls that are on the east side. This is a shot more from the northeast, which is giving you a better observation of the softball field and gives you a little clearer picture of those buildings that I was referring to earlier with the visitor dugout on the left, press box more in the center of the field and then the home dugout coming in on the right. Here's a, a shot from above looking directly down. As you can see, the concrete being placed from the east to the west. Pump truck setup where you can just, placement of the concrete and as contractors are working it across. Wanted to get this shot in here so we can give you a better idea of how, again, that's that Building B, which is the restroom and home locker room. Jigsaw looking puzzle you see to the left of that, that is going to be Building C, which is your visitor locker room and the concession stand. And then right above those, you see those squares in the ground. Those are all the supports for your new home grandstands. Since that shot was taken, all of the round columns have been poured and the forms have taken off. So if you've been by, you see these multiple heights of, of actually three foot circumference size gears. It's wanting to be the supports for your home grandstand and press box. Here's a little better shot of that Building C that we, I was talking about with the visitors, locker room and concession stand. But also on the left-hand side of the picture, it's hard to see because it's starting to blend with the gravel, but that is actually the drill rig that has started on the geothermal wells. That area there that Dr. Stoll is focusing on now, that is the new geothermal well field. That's where all your geothermal wells are going to go. And this is just a photo more from the, back next to the school. I thought it just gave us a good shot. You can see a good overall view of the, just about the entire project. It's your geothermal field, baseball field, all the buildings, the new building C and B. And then again, in our background, you can start seeing the baseball field and the softball field, infield's coming together. And then just another shot looking down over the project, looking directly from the west. You can tell by all the trucks and trailers and the individual company trucks and the three different concrete trucks you can just see in that, in that photo. And we're from three to six pieces of equipment. That was a pretty busy day on site. That's about it. So that's kind of an overview, the things that we've gotten done in the last month. Providing that weather holds for us over the next month, we are, our goal is to start doing the football field underground drainage. We're going to, right now, we're working on the underground mechanical and electrical in that Building C that I was referencing, the visitor dugout. We're going to complete that, target getting that slab poured. We're going to start laying the block walls on the Building B that we saw, we saw with the slab poured. We're going to continue working on the masonry walls on the other buildings, in the baseball and softball fields. Barring bad weather this, through the next month, the two months, we should start seeing structures take place a little bit more and more each month. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you all. We appreciate it. We appreciate your time.
Appreciate it. Brad, you didn't have to say word.
Did not. I'll make you pay for that later.
Oh, really? Perpetual changes?
See, those are attached. Any changes of individuals who have resigned or that we've hired since November are available for your review. We also have attached, as we move into item number three, all of the school improvement plans. There is one that you will specifically approve in a few minutes. These are for your review and that's part of the KDE expectation is that you have access to all of the school improvement plans and that you can give your attention to those. The treasurer's report has been shared with you as well. I think each of you have had an opportunity to review that. And if you have questions, obviously, we'd be happy to take those. And you can always reach out to Ms. Coffey at any point to make sure that any questions you have are addressed. We've also attached the bills for December. You've been seeing those. They are now compiled in one location.
Thanks, sir. Item four is a consent agenda. Unless any board member wants to pull anything out, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is.
If I could address just two things real quickly. One, I want to make sure that you notice the donation that was made to Friskies. We asked for permission to identify the family. They have asked to remain anonymous, so we wanted you to be aware of that. We also wanted to point one other thing out on item D, the squatting mitigation. We had language in our emergency plan that helped address that. But recently, the state provided us with some more clarity. And once we received that, the piece that I really wanted to point out to you is before we ask you all to approve this being at our emergency plan, is we met with both the city and the county to confirm that they were in agreement with the language that was there to make sure that everyone is aware. Just in case anybody is not aware, squatting is a situation where somebody has picked up the phone, called one of your schools and said, there is a gunman in your building or something of that nature and there's really no one there. What they're trying to do at that point is elicit a response from first responders. They enjoy seeing that happen. So what we are doing is providing for each of our office staff some questions that they can ask of somebody who makes that phone call so that we can help determine whether or not there's validity to this or not. And we can share that information with law enforcement if they are on site to determine whether or not it's credible or not. And we wanted you to be aware of that. We also wanted the public to be aware of that. We don't look at this and say, well, this is where our emergency plan is. We're always going to work with our first responders to make sure that we're in compliance with what they need to have happen because they're the ones who will step in on a day like that. So I know this is a consent agenda item, but I did want to make sure that we discuss that a little bit.
Well, thank you for sharing that.
Yes, sir.
My board members, are we good? Then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as it is printed.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Smith seconded. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, let be known but lifted hand. And all four board members were in favor. The consent agenda is adopted. Which brings us to the action agenda, item five. And item A is to approve pay applications.
In front of you is the pay application for all of our different subcontractors, or contractors, I'm sorry, as well as Trace Creek. Total pay application, number 10, is $615,537.19. And for Trace Creek, it's $40,529.46. It's my recommendation that you approve the pay applications for the GCHS project.
You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Mr. Hart made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Davis seconded. Any questions? All in favor, let be known but lifted hand. All four members present were voted yes. Item A is approved. Item B is to approve the Garrett County District Improvement Plan.
You've heard conversation about that already today. You'll see attached there all the components of it. So anybody who would like to review any part of it is free to do that. Item just mean you all, it's free to the public as well to do that. But based on the information that we've shared with you, it's my recommendation that you approve the Garrett County Schools District Improvement Plan for this school year.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the district improvement plan, C-Dip.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart seconded.
I just wanted to say I had, I couldn't resist the temptation to, to review and skim, not word for word. But I did look at those, the district and the school and I'm very pleased with the intentionality of what's going on in the buildings in the district. Also, I wanted to put that plug in there. I saw that with the PBIS was still in force at most buildings and really appreciate that. So appreciate the work that you all done. Thank you.
Does anybody else? All in favor, let be known but lifted hand. All board members were in favor. Item B is approved. Item C is to approve the district audit.
So we have received that. It's a clean audit. KDE has already approved it as well. You have a bound copy for yourself and we have the attached documents for anybody who would like to review that. It's my recommendation that you approve the 2023, I'm sorry, I've, I've misprinted there, 2022, 23 district audit.
You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Mr. Hart made a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Smith seconded. All in favor, let be known but lifted hand. Item C is approved. The audit is approved. Item D is to approve the Mills School Improvement Plan.
We need you to do an official approval of the Mills School. They made some significant movement this year, but they are still listed as a TSI school. And as long as any of our schools are a TSI school, you need to come back and do the approval of that. It's my recommendation that you approve the Mills School Improvement Plan.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the Mills School Improvement Plan.
Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart seconded. Any questions? All in favor, let be known but lifted hand. All four board members present voted yes. Item E is to approve emergency certification for our Garrett County High School teacher.
While none of you are excited about emergency certifications, and we understand that, we also know that there are occasions when we have to come and ask for that. We have an individual who is moving into or is available to us at the high school. They are a, an individual who may make the decision to go to an option six, but as of today, they are not. So because of that, we would have to do an emergency approval for them, for emergency certification. It's my recommendation that you approve this emergency certification of a GCHS teacher.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve, you've heard this certification.
Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Smith seconded. Anybody have any questions, comments? All in favor, let be known but lifted hand. All board members were in favor. Item E is approved. Item F is to approve a shortened school day for Lancaster Elementary School students.
We've shared with you all in the past, when we arrive at this point, that means that it is, it does have a doctor's recommendation and an ARC has been conducted that makes this recommendation. But in order to make it official, we have to have your approval. So it's my recommendation that you approve the shortened school day for the LES student.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Mr. Hart made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Davis seconded. Any questions? All in favor, let be known but lifted hand. Item F is approved. Item G is to approve a shortened school day for Kent Dig- Item F is approved. Item G is to approve a shortened school day for Camp Dick Robinson's student.
I make the same recommendation to you, that you approve the shortened school day for a CDR student.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve the shortened school day for C, the CDR student.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart seconded. All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members were in favor. Item G is approved. Item H is to approve food service equipment surplus.
We have some equipment that needs to be surplused out. Uh, Ms. Morrow has provided you with a critical fact sheet and pictures as well. So, it's my recommendation that you approve the surplus of this food service equipment.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Mr. Hart made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis seconded. All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. All board members present approved it. Item I is to approve Board of Education and meeting dates for 2024.
So, let me get this in front of you real quickly if I can.
I hope you all have had time to look it over. I did, and I don't have any conflicts, but if any board member does, let us know now.
So, what we have here is continuing with what you're currently doing, which is meeting on the third Thursday of each month. We've, uh, identified those. We also reached out to our principals to ask if they wanted to continue the process that we used this year, which was a meeting at their schools, August through December, and then the rest of the time be at, uh, GEC. They were good with that. We tried to align this so that, uh, any school who, uh, every school will eventually be in August, which is a little bit easier for, uh, individuals. So, the high school, I think, was this year. I believe Paintlick was last year. Next year, it would be GMS. So, if this is acceptable for you all, it would be my recommendation that you approve this schedule for the coming year.
Okay. You all had time to look it over. Do I have a motion?
I move we accept the, the, the dates for the meetings of 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart seconded. All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. Thank you. The meeting dates are, are approved. Uh, before we have a motion adjourned, uh, our youngest board member and his wife are brand-new parents of a baby boy. You want to share, huh?
Appreciate it.
Congratulations. He's been kind of quiet tonight. I know. I don't know if he's getting a lot of sleep or not.
Less than normal.
So, anyway, we want to congratulate you and your wife, and thank you for being here.
Yeah, of course.
And maybe you'll get a good night's sleep tonight.
Hopefully.
All right, item six is motion adjourned.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Smith made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Second. All in favor, let me know by lifting hand. Thank you.
Claire?
Oh, he's right there.
Oh.
Ethan, what you can do is go over to the corner, lay down asleep, tell him you had a late boy.
Maybe, maybe we're all over.